The regular council meeting of the city of Twinsburg to order. It is Tuesday, September ninth at about 7:35. Adele, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Stauffer, Mr. Roden.
Here.
Mr. Sorese.
Here.
Mr. Fury. Mr. Scofidi.
Here.
Mr. McDermott.
Here.
Mr. Yates.
Here.
Okay, next we'll have our invocation and pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Yates.
Father, we seek your guidance for the business as before us. We ask that you help guide us tonight, help make our decisions for the betterment of this community and not self-serving. Help us just to keep, to continue to guide this community in a positive direction. Amen.
Amen. Okay, next we have the approval of the August 26th council meeting minutes. Anybody have any changes or corrections? Hearing none, those minutes stand as written. Awards and presentations, I think we have none, right? Okay. Audience participation.
Mr. Baldwin.
Yes, good evening. First of all, I don't know who was responsible for widening that 91 down under by the post office, but I believe that's one of the best things that's happened as far as pollution that goes, the waste of gasoline and stuff. I think it was a great idea. The biggest problem is down there. I've worked with traffic a little bit. As you're going south, there is no right turn lane. You want to get people off your surface streets and onto your, onto your highway, you know, onto 480 and that. I don't go that way anymore. I have a place up on Highland, I will not go that way anymore because of that traffic, especially with the two lights. You have interstate on both sides, and especially in winter time, it is such a disaster there. One car going straight now, one car can make a right turn if there's three or four people going on the interstate, they can't go because of one car.
Gotcha.
It's wasted thousands of gallons of gasoline, and I'm definitely against pollution. I don't like pollution. This has been going, for how many years has that been that way? You know, if you would go there and look at it, that's why I say I do not go that way anymore because of that problem. You got a left-hand, you got a left-hand turn lane going up to Haddon Road, I get right in the left lane and go up to, and go to Highland Road. It's really a disaster there. Another thing I was just curious about, I don't see a permit light on the Twin Hills and 14. There used to be a state permit light on lights. I don't see a permit light there. There'll be a permit number, is that a done, gone thing, or, I mean? The state used to issue those permit lights, if I'm not mistaken, I'm, don't, you know.
So where would that be? That permit?
It would be hanging on a light, and it'll say permit number 14 or whatever it is, you know.
We'll have to look into that. We will have to look into that, I'm not sure to be honest.
Well, I'm not going to argue, I don't know anyway.
Yeah, right.
Another thing I'd like to know, I think, I don't think the people in Twinsburg are able to sit and realize what police departments go through, and I think it would help the police, help the people know what these police departments go through. At the end of the next month, say in June, the next month, they would show how many traffic citations they've given out, how many verbals, how many writts, how many sites. The OI, I'm sure, has the stuff, and he has to have, he's the OI, he has to have the stuff from the police department. I think what the citizens know with the police department, policemen have to go through.
Are you, are you saying online or something?
Oh, no, and like in a newspaper, sir. If you put it like in a Plain Dealer where people could read that, and they would say, my God.
Because he does report it here every month, but...
It has to be reported, you have to have it reported, it has to be, it's all, it's all on tape in the department. If it's a verbal, or, you know, a written, or whatever it is.
Yeah, he makes a report at every, at our meetings. On television.
Yeah, but I mean...
He gives a report on television every month.
I would think it would, it wouldn't hurt to put it in a newspaper. I mean, to show if you had so many domestic abuse, so many DUIs, so many OVIs, whatever you, whatever there was, so many red light deals, I really think it would make the city understand what the police department has to go through. Another thing I'm just curious about, we're going to do the Dominion East Ohio deal this year for the gas, or is there that?
That's in the works.
It is in the works?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Okay. Anybody else? That's it? Okay. Okay, we're going to move on to council communication committee reports. Start with Mr. Yates.
Yes, the Planning Commission met last evening. They only had one topic on the, on the agenda, that was Grand Village. Grand Village has an outdoor, I guess patio that doesn't get as much use as they anticipated, so they're going to actually enclose it, so it's just, they presented everything at Planning Commission, and it was approved unanimously. Next Planning Commission meeting is actually next Monday at seven o'clock. Then my other commissions have not met, however, there is a Parks and Rec Commission meeting tomorrow night at 7:00 PM, so I would invite the public that would like to join in at that meeting. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Roden?
Thank you. The Environmental Commission will be meeting this Thursday, September 11th, 2014, at 7:00 PM here at Council Chambers, and their last project for this year will be the collection of e-waste. That's electronic equipment, microwaves, toasters, curling irons, small TVs, and any small appliances or equipment with a cord. This project will take place before the end of October, so we'll get it back with a date on when that is, and it's sponsored by Jo M. McFerrin of Keller Williams, so look out for that as well. And that's it? No other report this evening?
Okay, thank you. At the last Board of Zoning Appeals meeting, there were two appeals on there that they heard that night. Appeal number 192014 and Appeal number 202014. Both of those were, had to do with Sussex Alzheimer Care. The first appeal, Appeal number 19, was 198 square foot variance for one-bedroom units, and then 63 square foot variance for two-bedroom units. The Appeal number 202014 was, again, also Sussex, and they had a 100.64-foot variance for the required rear setback. After, after meeting and discussing and having their hearings, the Board of Zoning Appeals voted to approve both of those variances for Sussex, and at this time I would like to make a motion that we waive the 30-day wait period for those two appeals.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Can I first stand a second? Gary, second it?
Who's second?
I did.
Mr. Sorese. Okay, any questions on the motion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Scofidi?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Okay, the next BZA meeting will be on the 24th, right here at City Hall. Tonight I also attended the Finance Committee meeting, and either Mr. Sorese or Mrs. House will be reporting on that meeting. And that's the end of my report tonight. Mr. Sorese.
Thank you. Last week, the Twins Day Festival Committee met. There's already over 125 sets of twins registered for next year, which is the 40th annual, and there was a long discussion about changes and upgrades in the event for next year because they wanted to make it very special, so we'll have more information on that as, as time goes by. Also, last week, we had a Safety Committee meeting here. Mr. McDermott and Mrs. Stauffer and myself were here, as well as Engineer Amy Moore and Chris Campbell, and the Police and Fire Chief, both were here. We had a very good discussion, we talked about some possibilities of looking at sidewalk programs, which we're going to meet again and get more in-depth, and then bring to council some suggestions for what to do in the future for sidewalk programs for the city. We also talked about, there had been some question from residents regarding ash trees and what was being done, and what's been done, and so forth, and as of right now, we have over 500 trees in the city that have the ash, the borer ash, or whatever, and so they're, they're taking them out a little bit at a time, trying to save what they can and treat some of them. Amy Moore said that she's actually taking her time with this program because she foresees some grants coming available, which haven't been yet in Summit County, and she's hoping that in the coming year, they'll start having some grants available for, for this process, so she's sort of waiting on that to move on some of these others. And what else did we talk about? We talked about looking at the possibility of, well, the, the presentation was, was made by Chris Campbell regarding the sidewalk repairs that they've done so far. They've done a lot of leveling, probably about, I think the number was 180 this year was on the list? Total list, right. So we have quite a bit of work ahead of us, and we're looking to come up with a solid program that would be a benefit to the city, to the residents of the city, but, but also something manageable that we can have a regular process going on. So there'll definitely be more about that as we go in the future. And Mrs. House will report on our Finance Committee meeting that we had at 6:00 today. And that's the end of my report. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. McDermott?
I have no report this evening.
Okay, thank you. That includes council reports, mayor, anybody, Mr., anybody have a mayor report? Okay.
No.
Department head reports, what department heads have a report? I know Karen will usually start with you. You have one, I'm sure?
I sure do.
Okay.
Give you the short one, as far as what our collections are for the month of August.
Okay.
Can't believe we're already in September, though, but for the month of August, we collected an income tax $1,243,768 compared to last year. We collected $1,585,098. This does reflect a decrease of 22% or $341,329 less compared to last year. The total year-to-date receipts collected is $16,630,171 compared to last year at $17,941,589. This also reflects a decrease at 7% compared to last year. The net distribution applied due to the quarter percent rate change is $182,280. As mentioned, we did have a Finance Committee meeting, and we covered quite a bit. One of the things we talked about was scheduling for that time of year budget hearings for the Finance Committee meeting, as well as the Capital Improvement Board. A schedule sheet will be going out for everyone to look at to see what dates are going to work for them. We also talked about the audit update. I received some correspondence back from Tanya Oklow, she is the Audit Manager, and she stated that they are now reviewing the work papers at this point, and at some point, I believe, close to the end of the month, they should be able to, we could start scheduling for a post-audit hearing, but I'll keep you posted on that. We also discussed at the Finance Committee meeting updating the capital asset policy just to expand as far as the dollar amount. Currently, being that we keep our vehicles, et cetera, for a longer lifetime, life period, we're going to enhance that to, to indicate that we do keep our vehicles a little bit longer than norm. And lastly, we did talk about the 2015 budget and what's, what's coming ahead, and that we did some major changes to be more reflective as far as locating data information about your road program, your debt program, your capital improvement, so there's going to be a little bit more isolation where you can actually go to that certain area and know what you're spending in infrastructure, et cetera. So that is coming down the line, and you'll see a spreadsheet that will just be addressing the department's capital request and an infrastructure sheet that is isolated from that, so instead of it being all into one document. So that is coming, you should be receiving some reviews coming, I think, next week, Tuesday, after the mayor reviews it. We'll keep you posted on that as well.
Thank you, Karen. Any other departments have a report? Mr. Campbell?
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Evening.
The Public Works Department, as I reported at the caucus, continues work on the, on the lobby project. The items remaining to be completed are mostly ADA compliance issues with, with doors and thresholds, restroom issues, so we will continue on that project, hopefully bring, bring that to conclusion pretty quick. Branch chipping, the fifth round of branch chipping was completed during the month of August. We had 438 stops during that, during that round. September pickup started on Tuesday, September 2nd, and it's, it's ongoing. We've had a breakdown with one of our units, we usually have two branch chipping setups out there. One is down for repair, so that's, this round's going to take us a little bit longer, and I understand it's pretty heavy out there with the number of stops and number of branches, so. I do want to let the residents know that the final collection of the season will be on Monday, October 7th, so that'll start the last round for this year, and then we will go into the leaf pickup, which will be October, around October 15th. The 15th, I think, is a Wednesday. We may start that on the 12th, which really won't affect people because that, that just continues till the end of the year, so people don't have to worry about missing the truck. Along with that, street sweeping, we're going to try to get one more round in this year. We're winding down, we did quite a bit of park maintenance this year, a lot of upgrade projects, landscaping, a lot of improvements there, and the one thing that we finished up not too long ago was installation of the floating walkway in the Idlewood Marsh. That was really a great project for us. Derek actually coordinated the purchase of, of the, of the floating walkway itself, and Service installed that. It was really a neat project, guys really enjoyed that project, and it's, it's really a nice area, so encourage residents to get out there. I think Derek's going to have a ribbon cutting soon on that. Storm system work, we've, we've made our eighth trip through all of the stormwater collection areas that we try to keep clean. Debris is very, very minimal this year, it's, it's pretty good shape. We ask residents to help us out with that. We find a lot of debris in, in the, in those systems coming out of the woods and things, so we ask residents not to put grass clippings or anything like that that will float downstream and clog those collection points, but they're in real good shape at this point. Street sign installation, we've done that up at Corbett's Farm Subdivision, those are all, all the new signs are up there, and at this point, we're winding down for the year, so we're, we're checking all the signs, existing signs that may need repair of some sort, whether it's a pole or the sign itself. And so at this point, the crews are getting ready for winter operations, so they're getting all the equipment. Leaf, leaf machines are being readyed, but then your snow plows and, and all that kind of stuff, so it'll be here before we know it, so. But, oh, you know what, we did purchase the three five-ton trucks, those, those have been received, the chassis have been received, and they were shipped over to Henderson Equipment for the outfit, for the plows and the spreaders and what have you, so we should have those trucks ready for this winter season, so that's, that's good news, too, so. And that's my report.
Okay, thank you. Anybody's chief?
Good evening.
Good evening.
For the month of August, the Fire Department responded to 39 fire calls, six rescue calls, and 154 EMS calls for a total of 199. That brings us to a total of 1,440 for the year, which is about 6% behind last year's pace, but we're actually closing in a little bit as we kind of had a slow start to the year. A couple notable events for the month, we did have a significant explosion and fire at a recycling business on Highland Road that caused $25,000 in damage to a grinding machine in the structure. Fortunately, the damage was kept, was such that they will be able to, up and running again in about three days after they completed repairs. We also sent people in our Kubota in mutual aid to Peninsula to help search for the missing lady in the National Park. We were there the first day for about six hours with two personnel. She was eventually found about 15, or, yeah, 15 days later. And then we also responded with the Summit County Technical Rescue Team to help rescue a gentleman that fell into the Cuyahoga River gorge down in Cuyahoga Falls. So that's, some of the calls we participated in in the month. Inspection-wise, we completed 95 inspections, and that's with a total of 1,388 sites in the city and township that we inspect each, each year. We completed four fire investigations, and we also had 37 training exercises through the course of the month. And points of interest, October 8th, from 5:30 to 8:00 PM, we will have our annual open house at the fire station. I'd like to invite, of course, council and all the public to come and visit us on that night.
October 8th, you said?
October the 8th.
Okay.
From 5:30 to 8:00. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, anybody else in department heads? Derek?
Good evening. We already talked about ordinance 97, it's on the agenda, we'll talk about later when we come up to that, jumping the gun. But I did want to mention the, the floating dock boardwalk project, it's pretty amazing if you haven't been out there. We will have a, we're waiting for a plaque to get out there, which I think went out this week. We'll have a ribbon cutting ceremony for that shortly, and if you take a look at it, you know, it's easy just to keep going, and you just put the next section in, and, you know, to eventually get all the way across the pond is one of, one of my visions for that, but it's pretty, it's pretty cool in the same location, right near East Idlewood Park, if you hadn't gotten out there. But also, the trailhead for Old Hickory, which is right outside the Community Gardens, how we, if you saw, the Community Gardens fence had moved, Service Department had worked on getting the grindings out and making some parking there, so we'll have a new trailhead location there, so you don't have to park at City Hall, you don't have to park, you know, up at Warren or Croydon in a couple of spots, there'll be parking for a few cars now, and we'll have actual signage out there, letting people know that this is what this is for. So we're probably going to combine a ribbon cutting, so we might do a progressive ribbon cutting and do that one, do the, the floating dock, and also do Laurel Trail, and put a press release together and get all those cool new nature things together in one press release here in town, because I think they're all pretty, they're pretty great. Couple of notable events coming up, our night moves, our ballet event is moving from outdoors to indoors, will be at the high school on September 26th. We're helping with the clam bake that the Chamber, Chamber's doing on October 16th. Truck or Treat, if anyone knows of any cool trucks or has contacts to, you know, limos, you know, fun things like that, we, we'd love to have them for Truck or Treat, which is on October 26th, and then we are starting our early, early push for our Turkey Trot Five Mile Race, which is November 8th. Pool is officially closed, we had our dog swim on a rainy Saturday last week, we still had 88 dogs, dog people love the dog swim, so regardless of the weather, they're going to be there, and the pool is now in the process of, of being winterized. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Derek.
Derek?
Yeah.
Are you prepared to make any kind of comment regarding, you and I talked about the Boys League project, or you want to do that at a different time?
It, it's fine, I mean, I've been communicating with them today about the Cleveland Indians grant, and Daisy's here who helped write that grant. We're, I've asked them for, we have, we're at the point now in the grant process where we need to kind of close it out and submit, you know, these are what our expenses are, and that sort of stuff, so we're discussing with them what projects they have worked on, which actually I was unaware that they even did these dugouts covers, but there was a dugout cover, some drainage that we, that Service Department has, has done, and then we're still doing the regrading and the reseeding of the fields, just didn't work out timing-wise to do it after the grant had came in, so we're going to wrap that up, and then we should fulfill our, on our end, you know, the grant requirements. We do have to put a banner up, and we're, Mike is working on putting that together. So we'll get a meeting with them just to, you know, make sure we're all on the same page for what, what the expectations are. Probably should have done before we went through with all this, but, you know, we'll, we'll do it after the fact to make sure everyone's up to date.
Okay, thanks, Derek.
Thanks.
Jim? Boy, everybody's talking time. That's all right, it's good.
Jim's got a lot going on.
Sure.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
The Golf Maintenance Department has been busy with the upkeep of the golf course and adjusting our maintenance practices as Phase 1 golf course improvements are moving forward. A brief update on the project, construction began July 28th, led by Frontier Golf, and it's so, and so far, some of the items that have been started include a complete renovation of the driving range and practice tee. The practice tee has been roughed in and will be an acre and a half when complete. The eighth green was renovated to accommodate a 3,000-square-foot addition, which was sodded from our existing putting green, along with three new bunkers. A new 6,500-square-foot putting green was constructed, and it is not far from seeding. The car path between holes one and two have been removed and will be relocated for safety and speed of play. A new tee complex for hole one is roughed in and will accommodate all levels of players. On the irrigation side, as part of Phase 1, a new control package was installed and is in operation. This consists of 14 new satellite boxes and a central computer that will operate the irrigation system. Double-row sprinklers have been added to holes eight and nine, along with new main lines in order to provide more volume. Holes one and two and the driving range are going to be installed this year once the land work is complete in those areas. Unfortunately, the weather has been a factor, we're trying to get things completed in a timely manner. It has been very wet with the rains that have occurred over the last few weeks, which has made it challenging for grading and final seeding. Our goal is still to have everything seeded and start the growing process yet this year. Lastly, with the fall season approaching, we have started to aerate the golf course, and the greens are scheduled the week of September 29th for aerification. That concludes my report. If there's any questions?
Thank you, thanks. Anybody else? Larry, got anything? Okay. All right, that being said, then, the department head reports are done, we will move on to legislation. Tonight we're going to do something a little different, as we read the legislation that we're being asked to vote on tonight for passage. I'm going to call that department head up here after we get a motion in a second, and I'm going to ask you to explain that legislation and the need for the emergency if there is a need. So with that being said, we'll start out with 902014.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the proposal submitted by Perspectus Architecture to provide architecture and engineering services related to a potential new clubhouse for Glen Eagles Golf Course. This stands on first reading.
Right, now is it second reading tonight? Thank you. Okay, ordinance 942014.
An ordinance authorizing the sale at auction of certain personal property owned by the city of Twinsburg and no longer needed for municipal purposes and declaring an emergency.
Okay, I would like to make a motion that we suspend the rules on ordinance 942014, place it on its third and final reading, and declare it an emergency. Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Sorese, second. Discussion, Mr. Campbell?
With this ordinance, we have a list of all of the items that we have put together for auction. It includes some vehicles, we have an Intrepid, Ram, Dodge Dakota, and a lot of office-type furniture and things that are no longer used in the city. A lot of these items come from City Hall Storage and some other departments, and the reason for the, that I asked for an emergency, with that, we can bring the auctioneer in in early October and, and hold the auction while we still have some decent weather. It's, it's usually an outside event, so that the emergency will allow us to do that. Otherwise, we probably wouldn't be able to do it this year, so.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Council, any question on the emergency or on this legislation? Okay, that being said, please call the roll.
Mr. Scofidi?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Okay, motion for emergency passes 6-0. Now I need, I need a, five? Oh, I'm, sorry, there's two missing, 5-0. Now I need a motion for adoption of ordinance 942014 as an emergency.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Yates, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. S, Mr. Roden, any question on the adoption? Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Scofidi?
Yes. Okay, ordinance 942014 passes as an emergency. Now we have Resolution 952014.
A resolution authorizing the city to donate certain personal property owned by the city of Twinsburg and no longer needed for municipal purposes to the Twinsburg School District.
Okay, I want to make a motion that we adopt Resolution 952014. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Sorese, second. Mr. Maestros, you want to explain that?
Certainly, this is a resolution thereby not requiring an emergency, requesting authorization by council to donate certain items to the school... requesting authorization by council to donate certain items to the school district. These items would have normally been in the auction that Mr. Campbell just discussed, mainly their chairs, student chairs, desk chairs, bookshelves that hopefully, or that the school district has targeted as being able to be used. The city would like to donate them to the district.
Okay, thank you. Council, any question or any further discussion? Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution 95, 2014 passes 5-0. Ordinance 96, 2014.
An ordinance amending the current year appropriations for the special revenue account as established in ordinance 19, 2014, the appropriation ordinance of the city of Twinsburg for the year 2014 and declaring an emergency.
Okay, I want to make a motion that we suspend the rules on ordinance 96, 2014, place it on its third and final reading, and declare it an emergency. Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Yates, second. Mr. Campbell?
This ordinance will provide funding to basically finalize the lobby project. The reason for this request is to provide ADA-compliant doorways on the east and west end of the City Hall lobby as well as other ADA-related items. We have found, we had an inspection done on those entry doors and the glass of those doors comes down too low to allow proper ADA hardware to be installed. So we need to replace those doors and provide other ADA-compliance hardware in the restrooms. And the reason for the emergency is to bring this project to a close. Otherwise, we probably wouldn't be able to finish that this year as well, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Campbell. Council, any questions on the emergency? Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 96, 2014 is an emergency, passes 5 to 0. Now I need a motion for adoption of ordinance 96, 2014 as an emergency. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Sorese makes the motion, second.
I'll second.
Mr. Yates makes a second. Council, any further discussion or questions? Okay, call the roll.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 96, 2014 passes as an emergency, 5-0. Ordinance 97, 2014.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with Rhine Ventures LLC, operating under the trademark Witch Witch to open a food service location at Twinsburg Fitness Center and declaring an emergency.
Okay, I want to make a motion that we suspend the rules on ordinance 97, 2014, place it on its third and final reading, and declare it an emergency. Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Roden, seconds. Mr. Derek Schroeder.
Yeah, so the facility at the fitness center has been vacated by the previous tenant for a few months now. We've had a couple of other tenants interested in the position, or interested in the space. And I think our best bet is to rent the space to Witch Witch. Their base, their one store is in Solon. They have two others in the state, but nowhere around here. And I think it's a great opportunity for us. And the reason for an emergency is I just got an email from them about an hour ago. They had their head corporate guy here looking at the space and they would love to be in by the end of October.
Okay, thank you, Derek. Council, any other discussion?
Just, I will abstain from this vote. I've done legal work for the owner in this particular business, so I won't be voting on it.
Mr. Maestros?
Just indicated, Mr. Yates, based upon the numbers, I mean, you would be permitted to vote in the emergency provision of this and abstain from the actual voting on the legislation itself if you want.
So this way we could do, you know, okay. We can make an emergency.
Oh, the emergency, I believe.
Yeah, okay. Anybody else, any discussion on the emergency yet? Okay.
No.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Okay. Now I need a motion to adopt ordinance 97, 2014 as an emergency.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Roden?
I'll second.
Mr. Sorese? Any discussion now? Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
And Mr. Yates abstaining?
Okay, so ordinance 97, 2014 passes 4 to 1. One abstention as an emergency. Okay. Finally, we have Resolution 98, 2014.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the Twin Keystone Water District to clarify the areas under the agreement.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution 98, 2014. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. McDermott? Mr. Maestros?
Thank you.
Please.
Resolution 98, 2014 is an, authorize the mayor to enter this agreement with the township. This agreement would be a cleanup measure to clean up and remove from the Keystone Water District any land that's been annexed to the city of Twinsburg since the district's inception in 1966.
Thank you very much. Anybody else on council have any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution 98, 2014 passes 5-0. That concludes our legislation tonight. We will move on to unfinished business, new business, and miscellaneous. We'll start with you, Mr. McDermott.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Mr. Sorese?
Thank you. I just wanted to repeat, it was mentioned earlier that October 16th, the Chamber of Commerce is holding their annual Fall Clambake. And Derek had mentioned that the Parks and Rec Department was going to be involved this year. There's going to be a lot to do for the families and especially for the kids. Through Derek's supervision and the sponsorship that we have, there's going to be a lot of events for the kids to participate in. The meals are $20 for a clam bake, $15 if you don't want clams, but you get the chicken dinner. And I believe the kids' meals are $5 and they get mac and cheese and chicken fingers. And you can make your reservation by contacting the Twinsburg Chamber of Commerce. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I just have one thing. I forgot to mention last week at, two weeks ago at our first council meeting back after break. I just wanted to send out a thank you to everybody for, I had a surgery back in July 1st and I was a little out of commission for a couple of months. And I just wanted to thank all those that sent cards and well wishes either via Facebook or email or text or however they sent it. I appreciate everybody's well wishes and thank you very much. I'm on the road to recovery and I'm glad to be back and I'll be in full swing very soon. So thanks again for all of your well wishes. Thank you. Mr. Roden?
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Yates?
The only thing I want to mention, I wanted, I forgot to mention earlier was the Memorial 5K is this weekend, on Saturday. So I would just encourage everyone to come out and support that cause. And it's a great race. I was participating in it last year, so we, there's probably going to be 100-plus runners. I believe registration is like 8:30, 9 o'clock, and then the race is at 10:00 or 10:30. So it's not a really early morning one, which is good for a lot of people. So come on out and run a 5K. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Maestros?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Nakaza?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Hearing nothing else, we will move on. I'd like to make a motion that we excuse our absent members, Mr. Fury and Mrs. Stoffer. Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Sorese, seconds. Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Okay, that being said, I would like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Sorese, second. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you. Good night.